Very much, Comrade Maklangi, ladies and gentlemen of the media. Thank you once more for this opportunity to share perspective about, not a perspective as such, information about our convening of the National Executive Committee special, which is information that we shared with you during the week. Now we are at the point where the meeting has taken place and opened by the president. The African National Congress is convening a special meeting of its National Executive Committee from today, the 4th to the 6th of October 2025, here at the Patchwood Conference Centre. This meeting takes place at a moment when South Africans are demanding bold, honest and forward-looking leadership to confront both the state of our politics and the state of our economy. We enter this special NEC with full awareness of the responsibility placed upon us. Our country continues to struggle with unacceptably high unemployment, worsened by job losses across strategic sectors of our economy. Many families are anxious about the future and young people in particular are searching for meaningful opportunities. At the same time, South Africans demand councillors, mayors and public representatives who are honest, competent and dedicated to service. They want leaders who will be accountable, who will serve the people with integrity and who will help restore faith in democratic institutions. The ANC acknowledges these realities openly. This NEC meeting is about confronting them directly without excuses or hesitation. The NEC will deliberate on candidate selection for the 2026 local government elections. This is not just about compiling lists, it is about the quality of leadership we put before our people. Our process is clear and uncompromising. Candidates must emerge from community consultations, undergo rigorous vetting and be assessed not by factional loyalties but by their integrity, their record of service and their ability to deliver. We are determined that every ANC councillor must be a leader of substance, rooted in their community, equipped with the skills to drive development and committed to running clean, accountable local government. Deployment is not a privilege, it is a responsibility and the ANC will not hesitate to recall those who failed to uphold it. Like we said during the week, we will in the next coming weeks as part of the Local Government Action Plan brief the media about major interventions and changes we'll be making in local government when it comes to ineptness and leadership at the level of local government across all provinces. We will make that intervention and pronouncement about the changes we are going to make informed by a detailed report on service delivery and performance of some of our public representatives at the level of local government. We are heartened by the fact that as we speak to you, all the partners in terms of Johannesburg, because that has been your major concern, have met and we have agreed on the way forward in terms of the issue that affected the PA and we are very much delighted because that shouldn't be an issue, like we said. Because all of us in the coalition governments at local level, we must respect each other. We're not coming together because we like each other or we agree and we don't run other political parties. We can't determine what must happen to the action, I mean to all the partners that are there, that is EFF, maybe Action SA in Twani, what must happen to Al-Jamah and all the partners we are working with in the coalitions. We must respect each other the same as they respect the ANC. They did not say to the ANC we want this mayor of choice from you. They stood with what we have put before them in terms of the mayor. So that is the mutual respect among partners. Once we do that, tomorrow PA will want to tell us who in the ANC must become the mayor candidate and the EFF will equally do the same. So it's a principled matter we are addressing here because the people of Johannesburg did not give us overwhelming majority to govern and govern on our own. If that was the case, we would be able to talk a different story. So we don't determine for a political party who they must send to serve in local council. It's a decision of a party on its own like it has happened with the PA. The PA attended to its own challenges as it affected its own leader and all of that and they've come to the conclusion of that part and they've effected changes back and forth and back and then they've effected changes and we must respect that. They respect their own constituency and the people who have elected them. Equally urgent on the ANC NEC's agenda is the state of our economy. Unemployment is the single greatest threat to our democracy. You will know that Ipsos have week in and week out given us the outcome in terms of the research and so on and many other reputable agencies. We quote Ipsos in particular because it's the most recent and back-to-back. They emphasize three things: unemployment, crime and the cost of living. Those are the three main issues top of the agenda and that affect our people. Of course going down, local government etc., etc., that is a concern. But the primary issue that face our people is unemployment and unemployment is the single greatest threat to our democracy. Recent retrenchments have deepened despair in households already battling to make ends meet. We will not turn away from this crisis. The NEC will sharpen the ANC's economic action plan, the action plan which the president will announce on Monday. Will announce on Monday once we are done with our discussions in terms of the action plan. I think later on in the day, Comrade Khalima will brief you fully about the guidelines. So don't quote your sources, quote us and don't respond to WhatsApp documents that are not circulated by the SG of the ANC. I am not the face, I am the chief communicator of ANC decisions as per the constitution. If it doesn't come from me, it's not it. It is just a rumor and all of that. So I know you have your sources but we will give you, Comrade Khalima, today. He is presenting now. We are discussing the guidelines and then you can engage him about the guidelines which the NEC will finalize. Once the NEC have finalized the guidelines, we will make them public. The SG will communicate the guidelines to all the structures and thereafter will give them to you, the media, so that you hold the ANC accountable based on what it said it will do on the guidelines for the election of the public representatives. So that is what we will do. So time permitting, today, Comrade Maklangi and the team will bring Umkulua in the afternoon or any time you so desire to speak about the guidelines that you will be presenting in the plenary discussion here today for discussion. The ANC is honest about the difficulties but we are equally bold about the solutions. This special NEC is not just a meeting, it is a signal to the nation that the ANC is stepping forward with unity, seriousness and purpose. We are confident that the outcomes will demonstrate to South Africans that their movement is capable of renewal, capable of leading transformation and capable of building a South Africa that works for all. The ANC will announce the resolutions and action plans following the meeting. For now, we assure the people of South Africa, the ANC hears you. The ANC acts with you and the ANC will not shrink from the tasks ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, SG. That was a sin-setting thing done by the SG. SG has indicated that we will have other follow-up from the candidate selection process, which I know you've been having sleepless nights about it and as well as the economic action plan. But let us take questions. Colleagues who have questions? If there are no questions, we are more than happy to proceed to adjourn. I'll start over there at the corner. Newsroom Africa, yes.
Thank you so much, Sister Maklangi. SG, this is Junior Komalo from Newsroom Africa. I just want you to explain the issue of the PA deputy minister. You are saying that the PA basically has the right to discipline their own candidates but also equally the ANC has the right to choose who they go into partnership with. So if it's someone who is alleged to have been found in the house of an individual who has now been convicted, then does the ANC not have a role to play in trying to convince the PA then to put a different candidate? I think the manner in which you phrase that to say that the PA has a right to put whoever and the ANC you're going to step aside but also in the same vein you speak about holding your own within the ANC to account and that you are going to continuously do that. It's a bit confusing, SG, so just a bit of clarity when it comes to that. And also, I know this is not something that you spoke about but just to get a comment on the SAPS sending a team to France to go and investigate the circumstances around the passing of the former minister. Just do you welcome this as the ANC? Thank you.
Thank you, Sunday World.
Thanks, Sister Maklangi, my wonderful, from Sunday World. SG, maybe to emphasize on Junior's first point on Johannesburg, mine is a direct question. SG, have you established why the mayor, Mr. Dada Morero, wanted to put an MMC of the EFF instead? What dealings did he have with the EFF and why would he do that on what was allocated to the Patriotic Alliance? And then maybe still on issues of local government, SG. I know you say you are still going to discuss the guidelines and stuff but my question is, is this process also going to discuss about mayors? I know ANC usually engages on that process of interview of mayors very late into the campaign and also with the mayors specifically, are we likely to see the approach that was employed in Etewyn where you bring someone from very higher up? I mean, given all the factional things that are happening at local government, which we know for instance in Johannesburg as well is the situation, there's an upcoming regional conference. As part of dousing the fires and avoiding unnecessary factional wars, would you look into looking at comrades in the NEC to fill up spaces of being mayors in metro municipalities? No, that's it for now. Thank you very much.
All right, Molokom Lotte here from ENC AG. Johannesburg, I must say, is very popular this morning. I also want to know, in the context of the PA leader, Mr. Mackenzie, threatening to pull out of the GNU if Mr. Kunene was not reinstated and considering the fact that Mr. Ambalula, you really labored on this issue in your remarks now. I think the whole five, if not six minutes, you were emphasizing that you can't be choosing for other people. Did it mean, does it mean that you have heard perhaps as a secretariat to come and go to Johannesburg and rein in that, that to say, do this, do that? Secondly, the issues that you are outlining in terms of how serious you take this issue of the selection of candidates and also admitting that you do acknowledge the challenges that people are raising there and also in the context of the previous meeting that as national leaders you had with councillors from across the country. The impression that is there is that really you are not happy with how things are done. I can put my two cents on the block that these commitments that you are making, the type of quality of a candidate, they are not new. You definitely made them previously. How did you not get it right then? What will be different now?
Thank you very much, Molokom Lotte. Started to sound like a speech but out of respect, we couldn't stop you. Go ahead, City Press.
My name is Nomen Masungwele from City Press. From what you are outlining here today and in the past where you are going through rigorous processes of selecting the mayors and stuff like that, the issue that is happening, one cannot ignore the fact that the factional battles are disrupting service delivery. If we take an example in the Free State where the ANC will give a directive and the mayors will just go opposite direction and then you've got the court battles that are happening where some administrative will take the council to court. Here, I'm talking about last week, there was a case in Madrasana where CA4 wanted to evade accountability same as in Rustenbeck where the MM who is accused of being in bed with the speaker ignoring some instruction. What is the ANC doing? Because those are the fundamental that needs to be dealt with because while the factional battles are taking place, while the ANC is not having control of the employees, you have a service delivery that is lagging behind which result in ANC suffering from the voters not wanting to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nomen. I will turn to... Did I say BC? Yes.
Zara Kurnavalt, SABC. Could we please just get a comment from the leadership on the issue of Brown-McHortsey's membership? We understand the ANC released a statement saying that his membership has lapsed. When, could we just get where he stands now with the ANC? Is that now being discussed as the fallout from the Madlanga Commission and those implicated? Is that going to be discussed in the NEC meeting this weekend? If we could get a response, please, thank you.
All right, I am done, I think, with the questions. Over to you, SG.
Thank you very much for the questions. Newsroom Africa. ANC matter and the PA. Just to be clear, each political party is autonomous and when you get into a coalition as per outcome of the elections, you don't get into a collision with the people of your choosing. And that is why we use the statement that "We operate in the terrain of our, not of our own making." The bed we are lying on, we did not make it. Somebody did and that is the voter. And the voter have given us, the PA have given us Al-Jamah, have given us EFF, have given us Action SA and have given us the ANC with less numbers to govern and govern on its own. So have given us the DA, have given us others in terms of the national sphere of government. So it's not our choosing. So what other political parties then in this terrain will do? It is them who then decide what should actually happen to themselves and so on. The PA have taken steps in relation to what has befallen them as a party and have made that matter public and have made changes like I used the word "back and forth". They took Kenny out, they brought him back after a particular process. Whether that process, you agree with it or not, it's a process that they have embarked upon and it's a process that the public at large and the voters and you as the media can bestly engage with the PA and so on about it. But that's what they have done. So the ANC cannot call short. That's what I'm explaining, that what happens to other political parties and therefore change the pact we've got with the coalition partners on the basis of what. So we had a meeting in Cape Town to discuss regulating the coalition's environment, which is unregulated. We talked about thresholds that the bigger the number you get, you will form government. And smaller parties said, no, you are subverting democracy by doing that. Let the status quo remain. It's only the ANC and the DA who argued. EFF and ATM, you know ATM was the stage you walk out in that movie that they had there, spoke and then they left. So EFF did not attend at all but all other parties were there and they spoke for themselves and then they said, no, this DA approach and the ANC subverting democracy. When we said that the bigger the numbers you get, you constitute government. That will guarantee stability. Because in the environment that we are in now, without any regulation or law that we are following in the coalition environment, it means a small party with one percentage can become the mayor, as it has happened, even in bigger cities like Johannesburg. You will remember the issue you had as the public and the media about Al-Jamah and the candidate of their choice and all of that, which was a big debate in Johannesburg. Up until it was resolved somehow and then the ANC came back and therefore the ANC was then called upon to lead by coalition partners. That's where we are and that's why we've got Dada Morero as the mayor of Johannesburg. So a principled position that we are following, it says you can't dictate in this environment we are in of these coalitions, what must happen in the life of other political parties. That's what we are explaining with regard to the PA. When Gaetan made a pronouncement publicly that they will leave GNU, anyone can leave GNU. And so you ask a question, will GNU collapse if PA? We answered, we said no but we think there are bigger issues that can lead to them leaving because they've played a constructive role within the GNU, PA. And therefore, we don't believe as the ANC, we did not miss our words or become diplomatic about it. We were straight that we don't believe that they should leave on the basis of what is happening in Johannesburg because that matter must be resolved. Even in Johannesburg, we went further and say that let's respect each other as partners and then not seek to dictate to the PA what must happen. And at the centre of the discussion about changes, it was not about Kenny's behaviour. It was something different altogether in terms of the discussions that were there and so on, which was really not about that. The question was, since you have left, is there possibility that we can reshuffle? And it had nothing to do about an individual because even in that discussion, the PA as a party was not extricated or put aside. It was just a question of them being moved to another portfolio, which they said, no, we agreed on transport belonging to us. Whom do we send in that particular portfolio? It's our local stand, it's our call. Nobody can dictate about it. And that's why we said, of course, they are correct. You can't dictate to the ANC, to the EFF tomorrow as to who they must send to become MMCs in Johannesburg. If you once agreed that the following portfolios would be meant by you, that's it. Even in the GNU today, you will have seen that the DA had issues with the removal of their deputy minister, something you will define as insignificant but it became a big issue that that deputy minister led to the DA threatening to leave the GNU and all of that. You know that. So if the coalition politics across, nothing is insignificant to political parties. So that's why the principle of mutual respect is important across, including to ourselves as the ANC and that is what I'm explaining. If it was according with the ANC, we will not be working with everyone now in the coalition governments. We will be governing on our own and you take us on on the basis of the people that the ANC have put into those positions. But we've got no such power and we're not going to pretend like as if we won elections when we did not. We did not win elections. The question for the ANC is, within the coalition governments, what do we do as a party to execute our mandate in terms of what we have committed to the voter, albeit the constraints of the majority that we've got? We don't have as a party. We welcome SAPS sending a team to France to lose an ambassador, even if it was not Nazi. Any ambassador in those circumstances that have been explained in the public. It shouldn't be something that we take lightly as a country. I could imagine if America lost their ambassador in the country and they are told that that ambassador fell from a building and therefore, and then that's what happened. Leave Nazi for now. Let's say your own ambassador is in New York and then you are told that your ambassador just fell from a building and that's it and then the conclusion that he killed himself. It is correct, the government and the ANC support that, to go to France, work with the French and ensure that there is no stone that is left on this matter of Nazi. And it's very important that we need to assure the families over and above but ourselves also as a country. Our ambassador can just die in a foreign country, just like that. And of course, it is beyond them if somebody took their life. But if there is a third hand into it, then we must be not only worried, then that country must equally be held accountable. Diplomats are treated in a special way in the context of the Geneva Convention. You see, not anyhow. So our ambassador went to a hotel and then from there, it is reported he fell from the 22nd floor and then we accept. We respect France and its capabilities and we are very much happy about the fact that the family have given us a report that the police in France have been very hands-on dealing with the matter and reporting to the family on these particular issues. We equally support the endeavour on the part of our government to also send a specialized team to work with the French police and the family out there in France to establish as to what actually happened. We support that as the African National Congress. Sunday World. I've answered the question of Dada and the EFF matter, not in specific terms, that if there was such a discussion about putting up a PEF, we're not aware of it and so on. But as the ANC... What is new? What is new and what we needed to do, among others, just to give you an example is that. We have not had enough time to deal with matters of um vetting of people. We have had encounters in this process since the last election. Where you find that somebody has faked a qualification and all of that. Uh when we deal matters close to the time, so we need to deal with that part. But at the same time, how do you then deal with the process that we are following now to give us quality? That is what is important. Largely, our guidelines are fine. Because they give us people who are rooted among the masses, they give us people who come from the people. Who are affirmed by the communities and so on. We elect in the A N C. And test in the community and that is the person who becomes a candidate for the A N C. So we have really, really tested this issue of people-driven candidate selection process. When it comes to local government. We will look into pitfalls with regard to that. We don't interview people in the A N C. We call people like a job. Other parties and the D A, they do that. And that is why a famous commentator failed the test. Of interviews, of becoming a candidate premier for the Democratic Alliance. Because he went for the interviews and I won't mention that person. You know, you know who's that person. And secondly, he paid millions of rennes to pa- to 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 write a book uh for for a particular leader. Uh in a, I won't mention that person, you know. I I I I don't want to be sued. Uh yeah, it's an allegation. Um so 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 that that that's what that's what we want to do. We want to deal with these matters uh in that in that particular, in that particular context. So we will give you what we are going to do because South Africans must know the processes we are following. And once we are done, the N C have approved, we will tell you the processes, the A N C's. It shouldn't be a leaked document. We will explain it ourselves, wait for it. The A N C will speak for itself. These people who are leaking, they don't know what to leak anymore. They just leak, leak, leak. A document like the guidelines of public representatives, when I'm going to vote, that is the first step. Why I must vote still for the A N C? How are they selecting their candidates? Uh it can't be secretive. That no, we do it at night. No. We must tell the people of South Africa what processes as a party we are following to select people. And then they can criticize us and then even make uh their own viewpoints about what is better. Because the system that we are following still emphasizes the power of the party, not the individual. So it is the party that nominate and select people. But the A N C in that process said, uh-uh, it is not enough. To have us only. Let's also go to the community. And we are not comparing ourselves to anybody. We started it here in this country. Nobody does it. And this process in the community has given us people who some of them. Have not even carried the membership of the A N C, but they are sympathizers of the A N C. But the community said, take Bambaata, take Nomzam. These are the people we trust with our lives, that they will look after us. Some of them have not done. As the community would have expected from them. Because you you've got many challenges, guys. You are selected, you are loved by the community for different reasons. Community loves you because. You are a leader in G B V in the community, but you are not exposed to governance. But Abant, Bayakta and Krali, Uguti, you do things that they like. Uh you dance well when they are dancing competitions, you you organize competitions. Uh like sports and all of that, organize children, take them off the streets. And and organize, do things that community can see. You become a community activist, a citizen and all of that. People love you for that. But you don't have the other skill requisite skills to govern. And the A N C goes to the community and the community says, this is what we want. And we take that person, we put them on the A N C list and they serve. And when they get into council, some of them have got challenges. I don't think the A N C is now in a position to depart from that. Because it has actually made us to be a real people's movement. Because the people feel that we are party to this because. From the process where we started, we are a party that learned from experience. People complained that but some of the councillors you select, we don't know them. And then we had to perfect it through the process of community involvement. So we need to perfect that uh uh process of community involvement. So. Muloko, E N C A, we will come back to you about the finality of the list. Even Mkuuluwa is going to brief you today about the candidate selection, what you would have presented inside there. Uh but the finality of the list process, you'll hear it from me. Unless if I have got problems, then Nomvula will come and the others will come and all of that to present. You'll hear it from me, the Secretary General, as to what is the process of selecting candidates. Uh city press, uh factional battles, yes, they do. That is why in the action plan we are taking steps now. Uh we, the action plan have enabled us to move faster. Where we identify problems to 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 intercept the problems and deal with them. Uh like it is all about that. It will be something of the past. We are going to act on that. Uh like Da Wu, we're going to act on that. Uh people who are inapt and don't perform, we are going to remove them. Uh in certain municipalities and replace them. We have replaced people you will appreciate in the past and then the replacement of one person with the other. It has not also proven to be right because it they then the 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 one the other one you replace with becomes worse. There's one municipality uh we have replaced twice. We went there, we replaced a woman with a man. Hey, that man had bigger challenges. Did not even last for six months. We had to replace. In KwaZulu-Natal. We are now in the third. We had to go and fetch a comrade who's experienced after interviews and put him there. The A N C process, by the way, is very thorough and that is why we must explain it. Once people have been selected, three names, they undergo process of interviews and their questions. As to in terms of those interviews that you must pass as a councillor and so on. So it is very thorough. So. You are correct, factional battles do undermine service delivery. Because you put people without capacity into strategic positions based on which factions in the party has now won. If I win a conference, I'm a regional chaplain and all of that. I was elected without a position. Once I'm in a position, I influence my new leadership to select me, to become the mayor. And then you replace a capable comrade, hardworking, no problems, simply because of a post. You are a chaplain without a portfolio. Now you must become a chaplain with a mayor portfolio. That comrade is replaced. That's where we come in, we are drawing the line. If you are, that is why no mayor in this country will be replaced. The N C have long taken that decision without concurrence with us. Because we have realized that people get to be released and reviewed and redeployed without reasons. So every province, they know, if they want their mayor to be relieved, to be, they come to the S G, they present. We listen to them, thereafter, we go to the officials, we call all of them. This is why they want to remove this comrade. Here are the reasons. Behavior and the capacity is a problem. He or she must go. And the officials agree. And then the process kicks in of interviewing new candidates. So you are correct, you have mentioned number of examples and which I agree with you. On those examples you have mentioned, uh in the Free State, in the Free State, we are coming back. Uh uh the provincial executive committee took a decision to intervene in seven municipalities. We met with them, we're supposed to have finalized that process by now. We have this special N C, by next week will be done. Uh with the Free State process. We've given them a mandate to go back, look at the process, come back and report, and then we take a decision. Uh and I know uh city press, uh free state factions like to report to you. Uh uh a lot. Uh they report, they report a lot, a lot, a lot. You 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 are the biggest beneficiary of the free state factions. But you're doing a job, my brother. I'm not, uh you're doing your, you're doing your job as a journalist. Um the second question is, how is the A N C intervening in governance matters in Matrosana? Um we must intervene. Uh in the northwest, they are coming now, this coming week themselves. Uh Matrosana will be on the agenda in many municipalities in northwest. So we don't want an individual opinion. They must come and tell us. Another province, Limpopo is going to tell us, there are there are mayors there who are working against us. As the A N C, and we are going to remove them. We can't have a mayor who's in a position but further the interest of the opposition. Those people must be removed like lightning, so that they can go serve Maiboo here. There are many things out there. Uh and all of that that are happening, uh not horrible like Trump said, but there are many things that are happening around us. People have got many options of where they can go, not here in the A N C. Here in the A N C, we are going to get rid of slippers. We're going to get rid of them. We know now in KwaZulu-Natal who's not serving us, in the R T Ts who's not serving us. Uh who's not serving us in the councils, in the eastern cave, in the Free State, we know now as a party. And let me assure you, we are not going to wait till elections about that. Brown Muhotzi, your favorite person. Let me explain uh Brown Muhotzi. Muhotzi was a member of the A N C. He did not occupy any significant role in the African National Ro- A N C, except being a member. Uh who his membership expired. If it was not because of this process, we wouldn't have known about that character. Let us be honest with you. But Muhotzi is not alone. There are many such characters who have infiltrated the A N C. You can ask yourself, a person who's so low in the A N C, how does he have control? And be accused of big things like what we are reading. That tells you a story. That the A N C is infiltrated as a party. And that is why we say, keep the cycle bigger, but know your cycle as a leader. Do not just follow everyone, leadership, leadership. There is a new, there is a new technology. It has moved from comradeship, eh, comrade, to leadership. Somebody just look at you in the face, leader, my leader, leadership. And then you feel good, hey, I'm being called leader. This person does not even know me. There are people who are saying it out of respect. See now when we grew up in the A N C, our leaders was Oliver Tambu, Tabon Beiki. Uh Jacob Zuma, those were our leaders and those who were in prison, Mandela. This thing have been called a leader by privilege of being elected in a conference, you know, your faction. And then you could, you can be changed. Our leaders are permanent. My leader is Mandela. You can't change it. Because Mandela went to the grave, tried and tested. Me now can still commit mistakes. You're still going to say my leader. You can't. The leader is the A N C. And then these people go around, my leader, leadership. And all of that and so on. They drive a micro bus there, Viano, January eight, up and down. Whatever the leader wants, he gets. Whatever the leader wants, my leader. Everything's happening. You don't know these people. The next thing, boom. We have been shouted about Brown Muhotzi. Who's this guy? He speaks about the A N C like he's a Triton test. He even sent me a message here. He sent me a message, I don't know where does he get my number. I don't care, I won't respond to him. He's not a member of the A N C. He's not. To answer your question, Brown Muhotzi is not a member of the A N C. It took me time to go to the records. I went to the branch. Uh even the province. He's not a member of the A N C. He's just going up and down, para- parabulating among leaders and his proximity. He's not a member. The things that he does and he's proclaimed to have done, he's doing them on his own. By impressing few leaders of the A N C who want to be impressed by him. It's got nothing to do with the movement. That time that the A N C. Is going to be dragged into the mud by characters we don't know, it's over. It's over. Actually, we should have answered you long time ago about Brown Muhotzi. When you asked the question, who's this guy? Because you media, you did ask. We didn't answer you imme- We didn't answer you immediately. Aye, but every day, Man the Album is growing. About this Muhhoti, who's this guy? He's on podcast. Hey, this is accounting about leaders of the ANC. Uh, he's accounting about things, police. Ungavugandewa and Funnelan and Amapoli is a one-way, yai-yai, back and forth. What kind of society are we? You've got good relations, Namapoli is a... What are you doing with cops? Unless there are two things with cops. You work for them, you are their agent, wimpimpiabo, or you are involved in something wrong with them. You are corrupt with them. Even in the police, they are corrupt policemen and women who work with criminals. Because criminals don't, don't deter. Or criminals go where you don't think. Criminals have even tested Mandela, tried to be next to Mandela, a picture. Now whenever I go, poor people who love you, they want to take a picture. I say, chief, who are you? Because tomorrow, I'm going to be told that, uh, I've taken a picture and then it will be demonstrated everywhere. I don't even remember you, where I took this. Don't take it, it is funny, but who are you? So today, we've got to answer, ask our people genuinely. Ungubani infondi. You are having dinner there with the family, my brother. Can I have a picture? You look at this person, eh, eh, wha- wha- what's happening? Uh, and all of that. Because we have seen how this criminal op- op- modus operandi is working. You know, when soccer players, young stars, who are soccer players, were ejected and their talents were faded away. You knew who, 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 who tell them a blow? Some criminals. Who will come close to a soccer player and attract the guy. You are a soccer player, you have not finished metrik. You play for Orlando Pirates, they pay you hundred thousand per month. You have never dreamt of it. You are still at high school and football is giving you that money. And then criminals come to you and then they start showing you nice girls you've dreamt about twenty years to come. And then they give you on a platter. You start to drink free of charge. Wherever you go, you are a king. Poor guys, in no time, their soccer is gone. Same modus operandi is happening with politicians. You want a tender, be next to an ANC guy. That's why Bumtunzimdwaba can go lying and say, uh, we ask for ten percent. Because they know that Lutulia House sent Mbalulau Parmatotinwefuna Yekweta. And all of that go to Lutulia House, uh, that guy will link you with the best of the best. Uh, uh, and that is how the system operate. In no time, it is corrupted. We must deal with that. It's the reality we are in. Name dropping and some of our people have found themselves in that situation, not deliberately. But unavoidably. But there are those who have gone to the situation knowingly and consciously. Knowing the velaguti, lechomini ti, chomi amgutotzi. But because in the time this is, I'm greedy, I'll keep him because he gives me what I want. But when you are a person and a human being, you must draw the line. So Brown Muhhoti, uh, in a nutshell, is not a member of the ANC. And I will never take him to the DC for anything. He must account for whatever is accused of with whoever in the ANC. He is accused to have had dealings with. And as far as our organization is concerned, he's not our member. Period. That is clear and we have proven in terms of membership, we know that joining ANC sometimes is not reduced to a cut. Brown Muhhoti does not fit that. That, that he can be a member of the ANC by soul and all of that, given his behavior. No member of the ANC must ever associate himself or herself with that kind of behavior. And I've seen people who are running AIs and all of that, saying Balulai is implicated in this and that. I stand for what I'm implicated about. I don't need anyone's permission to clarify myself. I stand for it. Criminals are criminals. There must be a line between a criminal and a revolutionary. What does Oliver Tambu say? Says a revolutionary must be distinguishable from a vigilante, a thoti and a criminal. Must be distinguishable. It must not be one in the same bracket. That between this person and this criminal, there is no difference. They are finalizing. Today, distinguishability between the two has become questionable in the eyes of our people because of characters like this. You see, because tomorrow you are going to say, but we have seen him with Mbalulaa fifteen times, this guy. What are you talking about that they don't know him? Must be distinguishable. You can't just wake up. If Mahshengi decides to be a criminal, I wouldn't know how to explain it because, uh, he's a comrade. Uh, when we're doing a campaign for me to become this and that. It doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. A revolutionary must be distinguishable from a thoti, a criminal and everything else. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Madali, I know you have two ears to go, but we have
May I ask that we stay still? This is a press briefing. Thank you.
So I was saying, can we have Miss Lambadila give us in less than two minutes or three minutes paraphrasing particularly on agenda of the meeting, selection process and guidelines in a simple, so we can introduce, uh, a symbol of the ANC.
We can do that in the bathroom. Yeah, only one in one. But congratulations for, for that because it's important to promote a cultural and linguistic communities. Oh, just, just, I think because it will benefit others. Let's do it here. Thank you.
Maybe while you do that, ST, you must also inform us about the message from Brown. What is he saying?
No, it's, it is not necessary unless I elevate him. I've just told you that he sent me a message. I did not respond. So, uh, and I will not respond to it. Got nothing against him and it's not important whether I know him or not. Because he was a member at some point, it meant that we could have met. But this behavior and therefore he is, he must know that he's not a member of the ANC. And there must be no confusion about that. And I'm telling you the truth that if it was not because of these things, we wouldn't have known about this guy. And I'm saying he will not be the last one. There will be others elsewhere who are behaving like him. Name dropping, associations and all of that. These are associations. They are not in the ANC to work for it. Our members who toil every day, deliver victories for the ANC, don't behave like this. Who go to sleep without food and do a door-to-door to convince people to vote for the ANC. You will never find the types of Brown Muhhoti in that milu. You will never. We've got members who love this organization and when it goes down, they cry. And it is not them who are bringing it down. It is characters like this who think that this organization, they can do as they wish, bring it down and bindzindobaitanda. See it again, alomasu, upenilunotanda.